All right, everyone, welcome to the regularly scheduled Tuesday, September 7th voting meeting of the Athens-Clark County Mayor and Commission where we're going to have an efficient evening. I feel it in the air. And I believe the first order of business on that route is calling the roll, so I'm gonna ask Clerk Spratlin to do that for us.
Davenport.
Here.
Harvard.
Link.
Here.
Wright.
Benson.
Here.
Hool.
President?
Edwards.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Handy.
Here.
And we have a call.
All right. First order of business is approval of the minutes of meetings of Tuesday, August 3rd, Tuesday, August 10th, Tuesday, August 17th, and Friday, August 20th. Do I hear a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. I've got a motion from Edwards and a second from Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. All right, Madam Clerk, any written communications this evening?
No, we have none.
All right. We are tonight, my friends, gonna have several opportunities for resident input. The first will be on the consent agenda, then on all the new business, then individually on zoning matters, and then at the conclusion of the meeting on any item not on the agenda tonight. Rules of input are the same on all occasions. Residents will let us know their name, place of residence. They'll see a light here on Clerk Spratlin's podium. It will be green when they begin speaking. It will turn yellow when there are 30 seconds remaining and red when the three minutes have concluded. So, is there anybody who would like to speak to any item on the consent agenda, which are items one through seven? Anyone like to speak to an item on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Myers for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Consent agenda is approved.
I'm gonna have Attorney Drake read three ordinances for us.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. An ordinance, number, first one is the ordinance number, item number one, the Byrne Grant. An ordinance to amend the FY 2002 annual operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from the Federal Justice Assistance Grant Program for law enforcement equipment and for other purposes. The second one is for the approving a grant from the Federal Transportation Administration, an ordinance to amend the FY 2002, 22 annual operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, so as to provide grant funding if approved from the FY 2022 Federal Transportation Administration, FTA, through the Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOC, for own-call planning and transportation consulting contract for FY 2022, FY 2026 Transit Development Plan, TDP updates, and for other purposes. And the last one is for animal services, an ordinance to amend, it's item number three, an ordinance to amend the FY 2021 annual operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for expenses related costs in providing animals with medical care, including medical services and medical supplies and contract labor due to staffing shortages in the animal services department and for other purposes.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Drake. And as the consent agenda was unanimously approved, those ordinances are now in effect. All right, moving on to old and new business. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to old and new business? Those are items eight through 26. If so, you can approach the podium. Items eight through 26, old and new business. Eight through 26. Evening.
Evening.
Just need your name and your city of residence.
My name is Brett Thurman. I'm the engineer with Armentraum Athenee Thurman. I live at 160 West Thompson Street, Bogart, Georgia, and I'm here representing Centurion West Park LLC upon their request for a change in the CN plan development at West Park. The use here are two buildings that were originally set up as mixed-use, commercial down, residential up. Given the change in the conditions out there at the site and also with the general arrangement in Athens where a lot of the commercial developments are going, our client has spent some time attempting to market this as commercial and residential. And at the end of the day, they realized that, number one, it couldn't be done that way, and, number two, the residents is out there in our meeting, expressed the desire that it'd all be residential. They preferred it that way. They didn't want the commercial component in the middle of their horseshoe, and they preferred the residential. So, we've spent some time developing that and have presented that plan, and we received a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and we hope that you will agree with that and vote accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak to old or new business? Just provide us your name and your city of residence.
Jeff Kuhn. I'm with Centurion West Park LLC as well. We're at 855 Gaines School Road. The site plan amendment has been a work in progress for nearly a year. We would like to thank all the residents who've been supportive and involved in the process, including Brian Winters and Wendy Miller of the Architectural Review Board, who have been coordinating directly with Brett Thurman and Western Baumgartner at Armentraum Athenee Thurman on the design of these boutique residential buildings. We have been through countless design changes to suit city code and design standards, site limitations, and resident wishes to ultimately nail down what you see today. The binding site plan will remain unchanged in every aspect. Building sizes, footprints, landscaping, driveways, and open spaces will all remain the exact same. The only change we are requesting is to change the use of two already approved buildings from mixed-use to residential. The idea to transition the mixed-use buildings in the center of Somerville to residential was actually prompted by the current residents of the community. They desired more residential neighbors to better time to the community and less commercial uses, which can often be at odds with the residential needs. The current binding site plan actually allows for such uses as wholesale distribution, whilst the neighbors do not want the change also remedies, design flaws in this community, which broke apart during the recession. The buildings will be designed to match the existing architecture of Somerville. The units will be offered for sale and configured into garden-style flats, which is a product type not often built in the Athens market. These units will be great for small families, retirees, young professionals, and many others. We received a unanimous recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission and hope to have your support as well. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate you joining us this evening. Anyone else here to speak to old or new business, items eight through 26? All right, hearing none. We'll move behind the rail for commission deliberation. First order of old business is the Athens Area Homeless Shelter Indigent Services Contract. I know there's a commission to find option. Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the commission-to-find option, which approves A and B, and stipulates that ACC GOV shall pay the agency in two installments of $110,000 each.
Thanks, Commissioner Handy.
Yeah, and I'll just make a brief statement. I appreciate the, appreciate the help on this with Commissioner Hool and Commissioner Thornton and the other support. You know, I know we all feel this way. The Athens Area Homeless Shelter has done, is doing good work, and Athens has always done good work in Athens, and I think this will help, help them get started a little bit quicker with some of these dollars. The work they do helps us. So, so I'll second that motion.
All right.
Unless, Mayor, I don't know if you'd like to...
Motion from Commissioner Hool and a second from Commissioner Handy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to item nine, the Morton Avenue parking prohibition. I'd entertain any motion.
I move to deny this.
I'll second.
All right. Move for denial from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Handy.
I'll just say real quick, Commissioner Wright, this is in her district. She's heard from numerous residents and businesses that are simply not interested in prohibiting parking on this small stretch of Morton at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Go ahead and read the ordinance, please, Attorney Drake.
In order to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to parking restrictions on Morton Avenue and for other purposes.
All right. All in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion to deny? All right, hearing none. Motion denied. I'm gonna move on to item 10, which is the Centurion West Park Project. And Commissioner Handy, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And, and I am gonna make a motion to approve this, and, but I would like to just say, over...
Second.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. I know how you are about that. But I appreciate that. The comments I want to make are, you know, I've had the opportunity over the weekend to, to take some letters and stick them indoors, you know, just wanting people to know about this, and I got some responses back. And, and some of the responses back that I believe there are some concerns in the neighborhood about this development, and, and once, once we talked through it, some of those concerns were alleviated, such as, you know, the, the square footage of the building, the floor, the, you know what I'm trying to say, of the...
Footprint.
Footprint, thank you. I'm drawing a blank on that. The footprint of the building's gonna be the same as it was with the commercial and, and mixed-use and residential, and so, so that's, that's good. It's only gonna take up half of the green space out there. And this was a plan that was approved in 2005. So, really, at the end of the day, there, and I'm, I'm saying this for y'all's benefit, but also for the residents I talked to and didn't talk to. The, the plan was approved in 2005, so all this really does is change the use of the, of the building and not necessarily the, the footprint or anything like that. So, I think the plan spells out where the garbage is gonna be, how the parking's gonna be structured. And, and, and I, you know, I think the neighbors out there are feeling a little overwhelmed because we are realigning Jennings Mill Road, so that's taken up a little bit of a construction effort, and there's a big construction project of building about 70, 70 to 80 homes around them. So, just wanted to be mindful of that, and certainly appreciate the folks that called and, and responded to the letter, and, and hopefully we'll be making the right decision by approving this. So, thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input on this? All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Handy, a second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor?
An ordinance, Mr. Mayor?
Go right ahead, Attorney Drake.
In order to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending a plan development located at 155 and 305 West Park Drive in the CNPD Commercial Neighborhood Plan Development District and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to item number 11, which is the purchase of nine hybrid Ford interceptors.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Davenport. The motion or second, or have any comments?
Proud to support this. Glad staff is moving forward towards renewable. 100% renewable commitment by purchasing hybrid vehicles. Thank you.
Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, if that's all right. Otherwise, I'll make a substitute motion. But to resolve that, we have a discussion and evaluation of ACCPD's equipment and policies for use of that equipment, including but not limited to vehicles, drones, and firearms, and to incorporate that discussion in a work session or retreat before the end of the year. I feel like we keep talking circles around how some of this equipment is used, what the policy is around use of weaponry, drones, the perceived militarization of our equipment, including with larger vehicles coming forward. And so, I feel like a, a larger discussion would benefit us all in this body and the community. And I spoke with Manager Williams before the meeting, and before the end of the year sounded like a feasible timeline for staff. So, if y'all are amenable to that, I'd like to attach that.
I, I'll say, Commissioner Hool, while, while I'm supportive of that broader discussion, you know, given that this is kind of very narrowly tailored to the vehicles, I, I don't know that as a matter of legislative alignment, you know, that, that this could be a rider on the vehicle purchase.
I mean, we've attached, I've, I've seen commission-to-find options on this body before to resolve to have a discussion in the future while approving an item, you know, if that discussion is relevant to the item itself.
Just make it a substitute motion.
All right. I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve this agenda item and resolve to have that discussion as I laid out.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion from the body?
Could, could you repeat what the discussion was? I was sort of focused on nine vehicles and didn't follow what you were saying.
Restate your substitute motion, please.
To approve this item and resolve that we hold a discussion and evaluation of ACCPD's equipment and policies for the use of that equipment, including but not limited to vehicles, drones, and firearms, before the end of the year in a work session or retreat.
Mr. Handy?
Yeah, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the effort of Commissioner Hool in bringing this up. But I, I kinda, I just want us to follow procedure. I'm, I'm hard pressed to think of when, when we did some things that weren't related to the agenda item. And, and that, to me, it's not that I don't want, wouldn't welcome a discussion, but I just, I think we're, here we're trying to celebrate doing this good thing with these hybrid vehicles. And I think that's the focus of this and the focus of staff, making sure that this happens. So, so I appreciate that, appreciate the, the sentiment and, and the, the voice and the concern of having that discussion. I agree with the discussion, but I don't think I could support the substitute motion just based on following procedures and such as that, 'cause I don't see how it relates to the, to the agenda item.
Commissioner Myers.
I am sort of, I am going along with Commissioner Handy's line of thinking. I support the discussion of it, and I'm glad that you brought it up, and that perhaps the mayor and the manager will then follow through and still get that on to the work session agenda. But it, I'm having a hard time seeing the connection here for this very narrow item.
Anyone else for our return to Commissioner Hool? Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, we have had so many work sessions and discussions with our police department that, I think if I would pay the dollar, I'd at least have like five dollars by now. But at the end of the day, I think we just need to stick to the president's and understand that this is a good idea and this is a great thing. I'm not interested in any more work sessions with our police department when it comes to use of force, and all the information has been given. We've had several work sessions of, of that, that matter, and I look forward to denying the substitute motion.
Mr. Link.
Um, yeah, I just want to remind everyone that we have agreed upon an audit of the police department, primarily structure and funding perspective. So, we could expand the scope of that audit to include an analysis of equipment. That, that's something that the committee could, could bring up and, and ask for an expansion of that scope of that audit.
Thanks, Commissioner. Return to Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess just one last explanation of why I do feel this is applicable. In part, there has been seemingly soft consensus on exploring the conversation around equipment in previous work sessions, but it's been months and we haven't had that added to our schedule yet. Additionally, the questions I raised in the agenda setting, we got a, a response this afternoon from the manager that talks about why we need pursuit-rated vehicles. And pursuit-rated implies, and certainly if you look at how these vehicles are marketed, a level of, I guess you might say, aggressiveness or something. You know, they're marketed as, as a sort of militarized product, even though, when we raise up concerns about militarization of police on this body, and when I've done that also privately in discussions with members of our police force and management, you know, they're quick to say that's not the direction our police department wants to go. And so, I think it's important, if we're going to be purchasing products that are military-grade, if we're going to be purchasing, in this case, vehicles that are large SUVs instead of cars, that we are clarifying why we think that applies with the approach we're trying to take to public safety. And I, I don't think that that's outside the purview of this agenda item, nor do I feel like we've covered that in previous work sessions, where we have had good discussions, but they haven't been about equipment. No.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Any further input before we do roll call? All right, I'll begin with the substitute motion with Commissioner Hool. Madam Clerk.
Hool.
Yes.
Edwards.
No.
Myers.
No.
Handy.
No.
Davenport.
No.
Link. Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Three yes, four no.
All right, we'll return to the original motion. I apologize, Madam Clerk, who is the motioner of that?
Edwards.
Commissioner Edwards. And I will say, be, be glad to have that discussion about kind of the range of purchases and uses of those items with the police department, certainly this calendar of years. Commissioner Edwards?
Um, yeah, I, I appreciate Commissioner Hool bringing it to the fore. I just, I, I do sort of defer to the, to the chair's judgment. I think making a substitute motion was correct, not a friendly amendment. That, that turning this procurement into a wide-ranging investigation of all police equipment, to me, does border on germane. So, I, I respect the chair's determination on that, and that's why I voted against that. But I look forward to the conversation within any other sort of procedure. So, look forward to moving forward with the purchase of these hybrid vehicles.
Commissioner Edwards, that is a yes for the original motion.
Yes. Sorry.
And, and just to bring the subject back to Commissioner Edwards' original, select salute to our work for renewable energy, just, I do want to thank the Sustainability Office for their continued work looking at fuel savings as well as carbon emissions. So, with this, these vehicles, they've reported to us will have a $48,000 in fuel savings and avoiding 273 tons of CO2 emissions. Very appreciative of all those, that factual information presented to us. So, I do support this.
So, Commissioner Myers, I apologize.
Because we're voting now.
I was actually going through the vote, so...
Oh, sorry. I thought it was like, I thought that...
I was confused too. So, I voted yes.
It's the mask.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
All right. All in favor, motion carries. All right, moving on to item 12. This is
the facility vendor and contract approval for our recovered material processing facility, or MRF, on Hancock Industrial Road. So, do I hear a motion for approval of this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, second from Commissioner Handy. Any further discussion? Go right ahead.
I do have a question, because I think when we saw this at the agenda setting, there wasn't a company in there.
That's correct.
And I just, you know, I just can't resist putting the company name in the, in Google. This is a Virginia company. And I just wanted to, it looks to me like this is the first time they're working so far away from the Virginia area. And then, I think we just got some information about how they were going to be reducing the number of positions over at the recovered materials processing facility from 22 to eight to 10. And I just was, one, wondering if there was a discussion of how they were making that, you know, they're cutting the workforce in half. And then also, the 20-year contract for a company seems, is there, is there a review earlier? It seems like a long contract. Could you speak to that?
Sure. And that is tip, so, you know, with this nature of operation, having a longer contract, you know, assures the company that whatever investments they make in, in the building or its operations, they'll, they'll have the opportunity perhaps to recoup it. You know, the previous contract, I think, was for at least 10 years. So, it's not your typical contracts that come across here for maybe three years with two one-year extensions. You know, this lends itself to, to more of that. As far as the employees themselves, I think all but five have found jobs elsewhere with Republic. And so, you know, they'll be paying attention to that. I can't speak to, you know, their reduction in employees, but they, they have done this work before, albeit, you know, in Virginia, and they had a compelling case for this, as far as Solaway staff was concerned. And we're very excited, because as you know, Republic deferred on extending their contract at all. And so, we had, we had two viable candidates. Pratt is also a fine company, but the staff felt that this was our best partnership.
But they're not changing out the machinery, and therefore, that's why there has a reduction in personnel needed?
No. No. And they're also very interested, and another reason for the long term, you know, as you know, that will be, will be building the new facility. And so, they'll be helping to kind of design the processes, be at the table, and then they'll operate it afterwards. So, I think that's also a huge benefit of this, longer, longer contract duration.
Thank you.
And there's ways out of the contract if they mess up, I would imagine.
Any further input on this item? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Welcome some more Virginians to town. All right, item 13 is the Costa Building renovation proposed schematic design, which we've seen in a work session before. Mr. Benson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, I'm very excited about this project moving forward. I think the design looks fantastic. During our discussion, and I know also during Historic Preservation Commission discussion, there was some talk about, some concern just about preserving the mural that is on the side of the building. And so, I was going to offer a substitute motion that on, that we approve ABC, D, and E, but D have an added sentence where it says, "Develop a final scoop of services and fees for pre-construction services," and then including, "That will include plans to preserve and, if necessary, restore the hot corner mural," and then go on to, for not to exceed contract amount of $770,000, $58. So, that is the motion I'll make.
I'll second that.
Got a motion from Commissioner Benson, second from Commissioner Link. Any further input? Commissioner Myers?
Yeah. I just want to also point out something on this, that I believe this is the, the first of, of many references that we're going to be getting to the Clean and Renewable Energy Community Advisory Board. So, this is the first project out of that almost $16 million that we have there. And I expect we'll be seeing reference to this again and again. And I really appreciate how the staff provided, again, additional information on the cost-benefit ratios and how, I, just all the work that's gone into this. And I look forward to seeing what the energy model is shown for this building and continuing to hear from the Community Advisory Board. They have been meeting very, for, for meetings for almost the last, I guess it's about a year now. So, this is when we're really sort of just starting to see their input on projects. So, I wanted to thank them for that. And I do support the, the motion.
Thanks, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Mayor. I support the motion as well. And I just wanted to check while we're here. I, I know there's been a lot of movement in the Justice and Memory Committee and others in the community around trying to get a black history museum established in Costa. That's what they're looking to do. And so, do we just have a clarified timeline on when we can expect to be discussing tenancy in there and if and where within the building that would be included?
It's a good question, Commissioner Hool. This, of course, really talks about the, the structural stability of the building envelope and ingress and egress with the new elevator platform and the like. And in the next couple of months, we're, we're gonna have a formal conversation in a work session about tenancy for the building. So, Manager Williams?
Well, this, the first I've heard of this, and this, I, I think I understand what you're trying to achieve. I'm not sure this is the place to do it. And so, I'll explain. So, what we're doing here is, these are for pre-construction services. So, this is not actually any work on the building. And that is part and parcel with a construction manager-at-risk approach. And so, you're selecting someone, it's, so the typical, I think the average person would, would understand, you design something, and then you bid it out, and you get the lowest bid for the contract. This is a little more advanced contract or project delivery process. You identify the contractor before the building's finished design. They can come in and give some feedback on constructability. They can help with cost estimating. At the end of the day, they will bid out the project to their subcontractors, and then we'll, as an owner, we'll be able to see all those. And then you will approve the bid, you know, the final contract, I should say, with, with the contractor. So, this is just bringing the, you know... So this is just bringing the, you know, the construction professional on board, and then the design will continue. And at some point, we'll come back and ask for permission to authorize, to authorize staff to negotiate the final, not to exceed, construction manager-at-risk contract. So if you want, I think I heard Commissioner Denson there at the end, that in fact, possibly restoring the mural, I think we're going to have to go back and come back with a different amount, because that, up until now, is nothing that I was aware of, or that the person that, in this RFP process, we didn't have anything like that in there, as far as I know. So, you know, you could say direct tonight as part of this, that, you know, you would like those things in the ultimate bid package that's sent out, you know, or you want additional safeguards when the construction starts. But this is just bringing on a construction professional to get us through the end of design.
And Commissioner Denson, just to clarify, your interest, it really was ensuring that the mural is preserved and not disrupted within the construction process, which in my read was really already outlined in the work session presentation.
Again, this is just to ensure this, and I specifically, just to have plans to preserve it, and if necessary, they deemed necessary that it had to be restored, which we were told is going to be preserved. But I just want to make sure that that is baked in, since there was community concerns there. And not actually saying that we would have to have them, yeah, yeah. But I think it's in line with what you're saying.
I think so. I just heard the word "restore," and so.
Plans to. So if they have, if they decided that, that the mural was going to have to be disrupted, that as part of their pre-construction plans, they would have also the restoration plans in there too.
Okay, so just, so as part of the construction project, the end, that we want a full restoration of the mural? So a refreshing of the mural, if you will?
I wrote, "If necessary."
Okay.
So plans to preserve and, comma, "if necessary," comma, "restore," yeah.
So just in the event there should be some disruption to the mural, the understanding is that, you know, we're going to bring it back to its present state?
Exactly.
Commissioner Hamby, that's your answer?
Well, I, yeah, I guess I was just going to say what you said about, about them not disturbing. And I guess, you know, if they, if somebody takes a, you know, something, if an accident happens, and, you know, we certainly want it fixed, but I'm sure they have insurance for those purposes or something.
And I'll get with Attorney Drake, and, you know, in the contract, perhaps we'll put some language that refers to the mural. And I think ultimately, in the construction contract that's signed, is where we'll really be specific about how and why the mural's treated. But I, I hear you. I hear you.
Any further input? All right, there's a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Link. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to item 14, which is the Athens-Cart County Library Improvement for Roof Restoration Contract Award. Hear a motion on this item?
Motion to approve, and I have one question.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Myers. Go ahead, Commissioner Hul.
Yeah, thank you for the information earlier today, Manager Williams. I just wanted to double-check. Does approving this item mean that we are moving forward with the solar array? Or do we need to somehow incorporate that into the language of our approval?
No, thank you for asking that, Commissioner. This would involve a renovation of the roof, which will, you know, gain about 10 years of life, plus the installation of a solar array. And at which time, that, the roof needs replacing, probably in about 12 years or so, barring anything else. They would temporarily take off the solar array, replace the roof, and then put the solar array back on. So you'd have the solar array for the full lifetime of its use. But when you cost it out, you know, between the cost of a new roof and solar versus the renovation of the roof, plus the library grant that we're getting, it just makes more financial sense to do it in the way that it's recommended.
Thanks, Commissioner Williams. Any further input on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to item number 15, which is the Schematic Design Updated Project Budget Contract Amendment and Bond Financing for the Classic Center Arena. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Edwards. Any further input on this item? Commissioner Myers?
You get to go first.
Commissioner Link?
Um, I'll just say that I've had some conversations with Paul Kramer and with the representative of the design firm. And we, they satisfied some of my concerns about some ground-level design elements on the building, and the street-level engagement in the building. And, you know, I think they, they're moving forward with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Link. Commissioner Edwards, any further?
Look forward to seeing this move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
I just wanted a brief explanation of the guaranteed maximum price. We're going to be voting on that in December and January. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's the trajectory.
So is there, will there be different numbers then, perhaps, based on what happens after the 75% completion level?
Well, there's, you know, of course, so these are cost estimates at this level, and so they will proceed towards development of construction drawings. You know, let's just say they're approximately 50% right now. And so they'll start to really get into more of the design details, something that would be more suitable for putting on the street, if you will. And yes, that will, at that point, typically, we would go 85% or so of drawings before we would do that. But in the interest of moving this forward, and I think that was the schedule the group agreed to, they're going to speed it up a little bit with the 75% plans.
Thank you. And just to reiterate this for anyone watching, we're not, there's an increase in costs here, but there's not an increase in terms of what the SPOS contribution will be. That's staying the same.
That's right, that's right. This would be the extra increase that we're, and I think everyone's experiencing in materials and labor right now, will be borne by the Classic Center, by a number of different revenue-generating opportunities that they're pursuing. It would not increase any of the SPOS, unless at some point in the future, the commission had some extra SPOS funds and want to redidicate it for that purpose. You're able to do that, as long as you don't, you know, come at the expense of any other project. But that's not what we're doing here.
Thank you.
Any further input on this item? All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you all. All right, we're going to move on to item 16, another SPOS 2020 project. And this is the first sub-project from the facility's modernization area, which is the Professional Design and Construction Administrative Services for the Judicial Center.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Edwards, any comment on this item?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the agenda item, the RFP and bid process seems to have been done appropriately. Look forward to moving forward with Crofton Associates.
Now, I'm glad we're moving forward with this. I remember, you know, this is, this came out of a retreat a number, a few years ago, and, and it's part of a bigger, bigger picture for what we're trying to do, and, and a bigger picture of providing a good service for our community from, from this government and from us. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers?
I know that we will be building this with the new sustainability building codes that I'm sure in the contract. But I know we've had a lot of discussions with the Classic Center on wages and fair wages. Is there anything in this contract, or is that right now what we're voting on, or in the future, that that can be addressed in the same way we've attempted to address it in the Classic Center?
Well, this is, this is with the architectural firm, so just bringing the designer on.
Okay.
So I think most of their professionals would be paid above living wage.
Okay, right. That's, that's the point we're at right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Link, and then Commissioner Davenport.
I just want to make it clear that this, the site for this facility has not yet been selected. There's still a site selection process going on, so just, so everybody knows that. We don't even know where this facility is going to go yet. Making sure the public understands that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davenport?
Commissioner Link made the comment that I was going to make.
Thank you. All right, any further input on this item? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to the first of two transportation corridor projects. These are the Lexington Highway Corridor Improvements. The willing to entertain a motion from any member of the body?
So moved. Second.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Davenport, second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Davenport, any comments?
I'm loving it. This is, this would be an awesome improvement for the Lexington Road Highway area. So I'm looking forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Commissioner Myers, any further?
And I would likewise say that. And then I, and actually, in the last week, I tried, attempted to ride my bike safely using the sidewalk, which I know is not quite the law, but on the south side of Lexington Road. And I was like, oh my goodness, this is like, this is crazy here to walk here. And then I went and looked at this project, and there's going to be a sidewalk there. So I am very thankful for that safety element added to this area that's really close to that Gaines School, Lexington Corridor, and for the other sidewalk, and all the work of the user group as well.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input on this? Commissioner Edwards?
I would say, you know, Commissioner Myers sort of raises a point that I've made, you know, that, that I do feel like multi-use paths are the superior design when we can implement them, especially in a major corridor like Lexington Highway. So just the problem that Commissioner Myers had riding her bicycle down this area, it's not technically allowed on a sidewalk. So I don't know. Manager Williams, has that horse left the stable?
That, I mean, the direction that you give tonight will be what is modeled.
Yeah.
And so, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
But I do believe that Athens, there have been some other T-SPOS projects submitted for the Lexington Corridor that may address some of those issues on the north side. I'm not exactly sure of that, but.
Yeah.
I think, I think there was a proposal for multi-use on the north side, perhaps, Lexington. But Commissioner Edwards, you are correct, and if, if, if the, if the road cannot accommodate bicycles, then, you know, a sidewalk's, by, by law, you know, is 12 years old and older, I think, is what it is for bikes only, bikes not on the sidewalks.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Myers needs to watch out for the statute of limitations on this.
Okay, right, since I made that public, okay.
I know the south side, I think, is going to be more difficult to try and do multi-use as opposed to the north side of Lexington.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm prepared to support this. However, you know, the comfort of Lexington Road, nobody wants, no child wants to ride a bicycle down Lexington Road. So just as long as we're cognizant of every opportunity we can seize to create multi-use paths, safe infrastructure for all users, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input on this item? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. On item 18, the other leg of Highway 78, we have a commission-defined option for Atlanta Highway Corridor Improvements. Commissioner Hul?
I'll make a motion to approve the commission-defined option from myself and Commissioner Hamby. Thanks for all the work, Commissioner Hamby, on that.
Second.
Awesome. And it's included in our agenda packet, so for anybody watching from home or catching up on this later, it's basically that first page, but that'd be items 1A, B, and C, 2, and 3A through E.
All right, any further input, Commissioner Hamby?
No, I'm excited about where, the direction this is heading in. You know, we've got some options to explore. This, it'll come back to this mayor and commission. It will give us an opportunity to, to hear from, from residents along this, but it also opens the door for some sub-projects for, for Atlanta Highway proper as well. So I thought it was a good, a good summit between the pool and.
And I appreciate that this, like so many of the projects that we've been working on, is one that's iterative, where, you know, we never get an entire five-mile stretch of a corridor done at once. But, you know, if we keep leaning into it, we get more and more and more of it done, connecting to more residents and neighborhoods and schools and amenities. And so appreciate everybody on this body supporting this. Also want to appreciate our late colleague, Commissioner Neesmith, who really was in on the ground floor of this. So this is for him as well. So I have a motion and a second. Further input?
Thank you, Mayor. And just a clarifying question, because I, I know this was talked about somewhat on email address. But like, is this going to go back before the T-SPOS Oversight Committee? If, because I know, like, my, my understanding is that the original agenda item, the T-SPOS Oversight Committee, rejected. And so I just want to ensure that this is going before that body. And my big reason is, I mean, I think all of us experienced this. It's hard, it's hard to get people to sign up to do these responsibilities. And whenever I found my person for the SPOS Oversight Committee, the one question they asked me, they said, "I'm not just going to be a person that's there to tell them to check a box, am I? Because if so, I don't want to sign up for this." And so I just want to ensure that we're, you know.
My understanding is that this has gone already before that body, and that there would not be a further check-in. Is that, is that correct, Manager Williams?
That's my understanding, is that, that the check-in is at the concept stage, or at this stage. And, you know, and it's an up or down vote, you know, either it's, it's in, it does follow it, or it doesn't follow. And it's an advisory committee to the mayor and commission. Yeah, I mean, you could direct it to go back to them if you wanted to, but I think the typical process is to check in with them at the beginning, you know, and then, once the commission has voted to move forward, then that's what, what we're doing.
Commissioner Hul and Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so there's multiple parts to the CDO. The sub-projects that we're asking for recommendations from the user group to bring back, those would go through the Oversight Committee before they came back to us for further review. I can't speak for Commissioner Hamby on this entirely, but I'll say that I think where our thinking on this aligned is that due to the Oversight Committee's recommendation for denial of what came out of the user group, that's why we've arrived here with a modified version of a proposal that I think addresses the concerns raised from the user group about why this, why the original proposal wouldn't align. And this, I think, does by giving us some conceptual designs that incorporate elements of what the user group brought forward, but really do connect those entire streets, Mitchell Bridge and Timothy Road, to Atlanta Highway. So there are a much clearer connection to that corridor and the original intention of the SPOS project.
Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Hamby?
Yeah, I, first of all, I just want to thank you two for working on this. I think this is a wonderful compromise that actually gets us closer to having something that is what the dream of having that connectivity from Timothy to Mitchell Bridge, and covers that awful little bridge over, over on Mitchell Bridge Road.
Two bridges.
Two bridges, but that, that one, this one, the one that's close to Kofers is just, you know, I wouldn't risk my life walking over that thing. And so I think that's wonderful and gets a connectivity there and puts us in a great position to perhaps access other federal funds that are coming down for infrastructure and such. In terms of the going before the SPOS Committee, it is the T-SPOS Committee, I might suggest somewhat of a compromise. I mean, obviously, this has to go back there, because you're, we're asking them to come up with some other projects. So I know that when I served on the SPOS Oversight Committee, there was on occasion a project that was approved by the commission, but then came through for a respectful consideration and sort of an overview of this, as you present them with the next step of having to figure out what to do with that remaining funds. And I don't know if that's, even if it's not an ask for an approval, but showing the respect of laying this out and the reasoning behind it. Anyway, that's my suggestion.
Sure enough, I don't mind. Certainly, it sounds like you just want to have, have the, have the SPOS Committee updated at their next meeting about, about the action we took, and I certainly appreciate that and don't mind that at all, if that's to the rate and that to staff's, I don't know if it needs, if it needs to be part of this CDO or not, but I think you're hearing us clear on that. And I will say this, you know, the list that was considered by the user group, certainly appreciate the effort that the user group put into it. And it's hard, you know, with these, with the meetings these days and having user groups and citizens involved, the whole WebEx thing, it's a little confusing for, for me, and I'm sure others as well. And, but it's certainly appreciated the time that people spend in helping us make these decisions. And the user group, I think, helped, helped us get, get us on the right path. And I will, the, the suggestions from both Lexington and Atlanta Highway, from what I understand, well, they were, those lists were approved by this body. I don't think Commissioner Myers or, or Hul were on the commission at the time we approved those lists. But also understand that throughout, the SPOS Oversight Committee has been given updates about what, what those lists were as, as it moved along through the user group. So, anyway, I don't mind giving an update for sure.
Thanks, Commissioner. And I'll note, just, just a functional benefit of this is that it will connect, I mean, really, probably tens of thousands of residents ultimately, to the key commercial corridor in the area. in the area where they'll be able to access medical amenities, schools, and, and all those things that we want everybody to have access to. Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I'm, I'm excited to support this, you know, to, to envision a multi-use path that stretches from Tallisi Road to Atlanta Highway, and then down Timothy Road to the Loop 10 ramp intersection. That, that's really the sort of transformative network development that I'd really like this body to get excited about in creating these multi-use path networks. So this is really, I'm really excited to support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, any further input? All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Hul, a second from Commissioner Hamby. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, final item of old business, follows our last SPOLOST referendum. One of the things that the voters approved within that referendum is the ability of this body to issue bonds. And for us and our understanding and the public's understanding, when we issue bonds, that means that we can borrow money upfront, and we can get these projects moving faster than we would if we were just relying on accumulating the pennies one at a time. And so this bond resolution allows us to issue bonds in the amount of $93 million, $175,000. Move to approve?
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Denson. Any further input?
All reviewing the agenda item, all of these bond documents appear to be in order, and I know they've been vetted by the attorney's office, so look forward to moving forward with this motion.
Yep, thankful to staff and the attorney's office for getting all this together, and that way we can get moving on these improvements that the community wants to see.
All right, any further input? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. $93 million, before long, you're talking about real money. All right, given that we have two items of new business, I do need a motion for suspension of rules. So move.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion for suspension of rules from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Hul. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item 20 is continuation of the existing state of emergency ordinance language. Attorney Drake, if you could read that forth, please.
... related to COVID-19 and for other purposes.
All right, any input on this? All right.
I have a question for the attorney. Is there anything that precludes us from expanding our mask requirement to public right-of-ways in particular areas or during particular times? Do we have that authority?
I think you would have authority to do that in a public right-of-ways, yes.
We do have that authority.
As far as I know, I mean.
Because I would, I would like this, this body to take up the consideration of expanding that requirement, especially in the downtown area during festivals, football weekends, and say after 10:00 PM, when we do have crowds on the street. The, the research is showing the Delta variant is extremely contagious, and, and there are documented cases of outdoor transmission, especially in, in crowds. So I, I feel like we could go ahead and renew this for now, but I would ask that we have that discussion for our next renewal, especially as we are facing some outdoor festivals in the coming weeks.
Commissioner Link, would you like to make a motion for renewal of this?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to renew this, but I, I would ask that we have that discussion for a possible, like, reconsideration in the next 10 days.
Second. All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Edwards. Any further input? Commissioner Edwards? No, not at this time. All right, thank you, Commissioner. Further input from any other members of the body? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And moving on to second item of new business, this is the COVID-19 employee vaccination mandate policy. Entertaining motion from the floor. Commissioner Hul?
I sent, I sent out a CDO applying to this that has some specific language around requiring the wearing of N95 masks for unvaccinated individuals. The research shows that they're much more effective, and these are, anyone who's not vaccinated is, is someone who needs extra protection, especially from the Delta variant. So I would ask that we accept that language. I don't know if anybody had a chance to take a look at it. I can read it out loud. Judd, did you take a look at it?
I did.
Did you find anything in it that was inappropriate?
Well, I was curious, you, you said to wear the, the N95 mask?
Yeah.
If you're not vaccinated, but there's also a requirement there that you have to wear double cloth mask if you are vaccinated. I guess I was curious, would like this constitute a cloth mask?
Yes, yes. That surgical mask is a, is as outlined in the ordinance. But the N95, I mean, there is a link in the language to the CDC page, and it outlines a long list of approved N95.
So you're putting that in the form of a motion, Commissioner Link?
Yes, I, I, I move that we approve the vaccine mandate with the additional language that requires N95s for unvaccinated employees.
Do I hear a second?
I'll make a second with a friendly amendment, if I may. And I'm, I'd be curious to hear colleagues' thoughts on this, but I also circulated an email, just amending that Section 3B of the policy to simplify the language, to basically read as a more boilerplate language that says progressive discipline will be administered for noncompliance with this policy and in accordance with the currently updated ACC.gov COVID-19 response policy. So instead of having that list of items there, we just simplify that language. So you'd accept that friendly amendment, Commissioner Link?
I, I accept that friendly amendment.
Okay.
All right, so I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Hul. Further discussion? Commissioner Davenport?
Oh, you said Davenport, I'm sorry. I was signed. So like, these last minute edits, because, you know, I like to read and go through these things I don't feel comfortable with, but I agree with Commissioner Link and Hul's sentiment. But like, my, one of my arguments that I've always made is the fact that, like, even with just masks, period, people don't wear them correctly. So what type of mask you have or whatnot, it matters, but at the same time, if you're not wearing it correctly, kind of mutes the point. But with the progressive discipline to, that's a, that's a, yeah, that doesn't sit too well with me, with, with the Section 3B of the policy. So, well, yeah, so, I was saying that.
Commissioner Hul, did you want to kind of flesh out what, what that ordinance references?
Sure, yeah. I mean, the short version is, you know, we're referring to this policy as a mandate, and I think it's important to be clear, kind of like, how that's going to play out for everybody. And I think progressive discipline leaves open the flexibility for management all the way up to the top to decide how to go about that in terms of what it looks like or what timeline it occurs on in a way that's appropriate and hopefully amenable to our staff. At the same time, I think it's important that when we pass ordinances and resolutions and policies, that we're careful to make sure our language honors all the other language buried in it. And if we're going to use language like mandate, I think it's important that we're clear all the way through how we're planning to align the follow-up and accountability with the titles of our documents.
Commissioner Myers?
I've thought about this a whole lot and read through this really carefully and read through the different emails from Manager Williams concerning staff as well. And I keep coming back to the fact that the goal here right now is to get as many of our Athens Clark County people vaccinated as possible. And my focus right now, I went through the mandate, I went through this, and I saw, I brought up that question about the progressive discipline applying to the social distancing and the masking. And I had problems with the word mandate, which I know we voted on, okay? But I've had more term, to time to sort of reflect on this. And as a first step with all these incentives, I'm, I'm very concerned about our, our morale of those we leave behind. I just hear more and more examples of people resigning, quitting. There's a lot of misinformation out there that I think all of us here will agree with, but it's still, there's many, many, many people who wholeheartedly, and I'll probably get emails from this about this, but embrace a different point of view on this, not one that I agree with. So my, my feeling is, when I went through this, to make it consistent, I wanted to change the word mandate to directive and not use the hold off on the mandate words in here and see what this wonderful incentive program does, and if we can get something in here to get sort of some information in, like in a month from now, on what percentage of people have responded and giving this information. Because as, as what the, the policy I was looking at the other day that we were started with does leave room to revise this and add more things in, apply the progressive discipline to the mandate. And I, and actually, I wanted some feedback from the attorney on even whether or not that could, would work, having the progressive discipline applied for the vaccination per se, if that was going to be any kind of legal situation as well. So I, I'm for kind of keeping with this last draft that we made public, and I'd be happy to put a friendly amendment, changing the word mandate to directive in here, which I know some of my fellow commissioners will be very, you know, will not agree with. But my goal here is to get as many people vaccinated as possible, and also consider the morale of our workers.
And so Commissioner Myers, your, your question of the attorney is?
Is, can the progressive discipline be applied? Is there any question of that being applicable to a vaccination mandate requirement?
I don't believe so. It's, that's set forth under ordinance, so I think you could certainly, we would need to follow progressive discipline.
Okay, so that wasn't one of the reasons why we left it out to begin with? No? Okay, that's clear.
Commissioner Edwards?
I, I, I understand where this is coming from, this motion from Commissioner Link, you know, that, that N95 masks in fact provide superior protection against transmission of this disease. And then I, I also have some sympathy with Commissioner Hul's amendment of this policy to lend it more clarity. This is in fact a mandate. Noncompliance with the mandate, by definition, has consequences. That's our role as a policymaker. Those consequences, though, are meted out by the manager, who is the chief officer of this government when it comes to employment matters. So in light of the circumstances of this public health pandemic, the fact that 98% of our ICU beds are occupied, we're, we're looking at an increasingly degrading situation on the University of Georgia with even Coach Kirby Smart expressing deep concern with the viability of his football program moving forward. The scope and scale of this pandemic grows each day with this more contagious variant. And so I believe it's important for us as policymakers to, at times, take a courageous stand for the health and protection of, above all else, our employees, the, the folks who work for this government. And science, public policy has proven that mandatory vaccines are a key component of a first-world public health program. Just as my colleagues who send childrens to school must comply with getting vaccinations, this has been established in this country for generations, dating back to General George Washington mandating that the Continental Army get vaccinated for smallpox. I'm not even sure we'd have a country if that policy hadn't been implemented. So I look forward to, to moving forward with this policy and allowing the management team the appropriate level discretion to effectively effectuate this, this policy as needed moving forward.
Any further input? Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, so I, I agree, I support the original policy as written. I think staff and manager has done a really good job. Just because I got this late, so I, just for clarification from Commissioner Hul, Section 3B would be, like, progressive discipline would apply to businesses that don't comply?
It would not apply to businesses. This is just for internal staff. So it would only be applied within our own departments, under the purview of our, our management.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, for masks and social distancing, is that right?
Well, everything contained in this policy, so for vaccinations as well, the CDO version.
Yeah. Okay, so we're talking about Commissioner Link's, which was mask only, but?
No, my, my CDO simply inserts a requirement that any unvaccinated employee is required to wear an N95, not just a cloth mask. All employees should wear a cloth mask. The CDC requires that everybody, regardless of vaccination status. But if your status is unvaccinated, you should take that extra step and wear the N95. It offers that extra protection. That's, that's my CDO. Commissioner Hul's notes that the progressive discipline makes no, makes no reference to vaccination status. We want to assure that there is progressive discipline for those who do not get vaccinated.
Okay. And progress, while progressive discipline does allow some flexibility, you know, our experience with that and has laid out in the ordinance, if there's comply, ultimately not compliance, then that will end in termination. Just to be clear.
And Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I, I appreciate greatly what Commissioner Link and Commissioner Hul bring in with these CDOs. Because of the seriousness and already the confusion that surrounds vaccinations and also vaccination mandates, I think it'd be, and I'm somebody who is definitely oftentimes willing for us to massage our legislation, I think this one, we should pass what is sitting on the agenda that's publicly available right now, that is the clearest thing that we have actually been discussing. And just so that there is, to limit any kind of confusion or any, or any kind of idea that we are writing this on the fly, I think that we should go ahead and pass it as it is written. And I understand the concerns about the mandate, but when it comes down to it, there's only one way we're getting out of this pandemic, and that's out of having 75%, 80% of the community, of the populace inoculated one way or the other. Either that's through getting vaccinated, or then getting COVID, filling our hospitals, having more deaths. So I definitely am in favor of this, of this mandate, but, and in favor of the original, original motion.
Are you making a substitute motion?
Was there, I thought, I thought there was.
No, there's just a CDO is on the floor.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a substitute motion just for the, yeah, for the, the agenda item as it's written.
And I'll second.
All right, substitute motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Myers. Go ahead, Commissioner Hul.
You know, I guess I'd say that I understand that this policy was available to the public for a few days before now for people to look at. Certainly what we pass, I think, is going to be more viewed than anything that's been presented to date. So I think there will be clarity with whatever we do pass. And I think it's important to note the lack of clarity in the policy as written. I think it's actually confusing to pass a policy about vaccination where the one key element in it around compliance doesn't mention vaccination. We don't need another policy for masking. We've already got a policy for masking. There's already masking requirements in place. So there's no need for us to even have that in another policy. What we don't have is any clarity around vaccinations. And so this policy, which is about vaccinations, I feel, is missing, confusingly, the one key element, which is what happens if people don't comply. And I, I think it's important for us to be upfront with staff that we're expecting compliance with a, with a mandate that we put forward. To me, it's, it's pretty cut and dry and simple in that regard. Now, to speak to Commissioner Now, to speak to Commissioner Myers' point about our desire to really retain employees, I think there's two key things to note, and then I'll yield the floor. The first is, we can and should do more, I think, to engage our staff with why we think this is important, why it's in their best interest, and why we're ultimately asking them to do something that millions of people in the country have done and that everyone on this body has already done. The other thing I'll say is that I think we're downplaying the effect on morale of losing people for weeks at a time because they're exposed to COVID or catch it, from people getting very sick and the costs on the county financially, as well as to their morale, from people getting COVID. And the morale that is down from people worrying about whether they're safe in their own workplace. So ultimately, we're dealing with morale issues either way. I think it's in our best interest to go the way that's in the interest of public health. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
I think we all agree here that we want more of our employees to be vaccinated. I'm supporting this first version that's out there in the public, despite what I think is confusing use of the word mandate, but I'm supporting this. There is a real focus here on incentive, a lot of really wonderful incentives in terms of getting, what is it, $200 back, a day is, a day off, some wellness, other points for the, the health benefit package they have, and I'm probably leaving out a few. Right now, employees have till, I believe, November 10th to do this. So the language we put in here tonight, we're already saying, we can change this language. That's in there. But right now, no one has to get this for two months. So I would like to use this two months right now to incentivize people to get this as much as possible and see how morale goes with that. We also already have many departments that are low. We don't have our leaf and limb, I, I think the water, I want to, I want to get my water fixed. I haven't called, but what I've also read is that it's so, there are so few people working in our water department to come out and turn my water off that's stuck in the right position, but for me to work on it, because they're only available for emergencies. So we have a crisis of some sorts already in many of our departments, based on what Manager Williams has said. So I think we're all going in the same direction. It's the language that's being used. Between now and November 10th, nothing different's going to happen, whether or not we vote for this or, or change the wording with the CDO. And we have the ability to change this again in October or the beginning of November if we need to. So I'm going to be supporting this original, whatever it is, agenda item.
Commissioner Hamby?
And I was going to suggest the same thing, perhaps a way out of this discussion we're having here is revisit this, pass this policy tonight so we can get something on the ground so that people know what, know what direction we're heading in, know what to expect, and then, and then revisit it next month as we look at the next declaration that we have. I will say this, though, I know we're giving a lot of incentives for people that would, would get the vaccine, and I'm, I'm just wondering, does any of this include people that have already gotten the vaccine?
Yes.
Oh, it does? Okay, good. And they get the day off too, right? Okay, good. Okay, just making sure.
You get a day off, Commissioner?
I need several.
Well, just to clarify, they should have, if they've gotten the vaccine, you know, they could have availed themselves at the time for the day off.
Right.
And that's why, in talking with Attorney Drake, you can't really do a retrospective reward, but if you pick a date in the future, now at that point, anybody who's vaccinated, regardless of when they got vaccinated.
I got you.
That's how we're doing the incentive, so that it's fair, and there's some parity there for folks that already got it to begin with.
Further input, Commissioner Link?
I just want to state for the record that this policy as written is not a mandate. It does not mention vaccination status in progressive discipline. There is no real motivation other than these, you know, day off and $200 rewards, which, you know, to some who are stuck in their ways, anti-vax misinformation, I doubt they would see that as much of a reward. The Department of Health is already offering $200 for vaccination. So I feel like the only way to make a mandate is to make an actual mandate. And I'm less concerned about morale than I am about the actual lives of our employees and the people with whom they come in contact. As far as morale goes, you know, speaking as someone who works for the University of Georgia, where there is no vaccine mandate, there is no mask policy, I can speak to the fear as an employee of setting foot in those buildings every single day and never knowing who I'm going to encounter, who's going to lean over my desk, whether or not they have a mask on, and whether or not they're actually carrying COVID. We're missing someone behind this rail because of that right now. I'd like to know how many employees we have lost due to COVID, how many employee hours we've lost due to COVID, how much money has been put into our healthcare system treating those employees. It's time we put our foot down and actually took a stance and had some courage and protected the health of the public of this community, because the other entities in this community are not doing it.
Mr. Denson?
I, honestly, I guess the way I'm feeling about this is that, because there seems to be a lot of confusion about the language of this, and I'm honestly starting to consider just that we might need to hold this and vote on next Tuesday. Like, I'm wondering, are we, are we actually ready to vote on such a serious matter?
Not serious, front of the mill.
Yeah. So actually, yeah, I, I, I remove my motion, I put a motion to, to hold until next Tuesday to be voted a special session, at our work session.
Under parliamentary rules, I'm not sure what the, Judd, I might need some help with this, I'm not sure what the route is, when the motioner of a substitute motion withdraws that, do we then simply return to the original motion, which was this commission defined option by Lincoln?
If it's been withdrawn, I would think it's withdrawn, you know, so.
All right.
Give us a new substitute.
I'll, I'll make a new substitute motion to approve this.
And I'll second.
All right. So motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Davenport, and you indicated interest in further discourse, Commissioner Hul.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to just clarify that if we, if, if both motions on the floor fail, then we can decide to place a hold, but I don't, I don't see the need to do that. And, you know, it sounds to me like we're likely to get consensus around one or another. But I, I'll use this opportunity to also say, I continue to support the original motion for the CDO language, because I feel it's important that we're abiding by the four agreements and being impeccable with our word. Thanks.
All right. Substitute motion on the floor, the motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Davenport, you do the?
Mayor, I do have a clarifying question then.
Yeah, go right ahead.
For the manager. Because it sounded like the manager replied earlier, was to make it sound like it was a mandate and that there were lines in place, but I do, I do understand what some of my colleagues are saying, but the wording is not actually there necessarily, or it's really structured very oddly. So I guess just to get, for like, extreme clarity, is there progressive discipline to be administered for noncompliance with getting vaccinated?
Not in the policy I've recommended, Commissioner.
All right. Mr. Edwards?
However, again, for clarity, the policy, section A, ACC GOV, requires all employees to become fully vaccinated.
Well, I can clarify that. For anybody that's not vaccinated after November the 10th, they'd be required to wear masks during times of high transmission and substantial transmission. And that, you know, before the Delta variant, I think we could have distinguished between vaccinated and unvaccinated folks, but as it stands now, even though greatly reduced chances of transmitting, carrying the transmitting disease by vaccinated folks, they still can. And so we can't, you know, there's, as I say, positive incentives for vaccination and negative incentives, if you will. And mask, the requiring of mask, other than, I think Commissioner Link makes a distinction between the types of mask and her CDO, you know, and so, you know, the way that the, this policy's proposed, progressive discipline is levied at, at the masking and social distancing, but not at the actual vaccination as of November the 10th.
One more time, Commissioner Myers?
Okay. For clarity's sake, adding on to this, in the present agenda item, three COVID-19 mandates, the last part, it says, the ACC may update this policy. According to the way it's written, can we update it? Could we add a fourth, progressive discipline for noncompliance with, as one of the possibilities down the line? To clarify that?
Certainly.
Would that need to be made in order to include this? Does it have to be made? Is that implicit that we could add that in? Because I guess that we can, because it says may include but are not limited to, so.
I think Attorney Drake, I mean, they certainly have the ability to do, to, to, to put such a vaccine mandate in place and that, you know, according to ordinance, if that were the case, we would use progressive discipline to urge folks towards compliance.
Right. So, and actually, it doesn't need to be added, because it's such, may include but are not limited to, to these three. So a fourth one we could add would be this, so I just want to clarify that.
And I will say, part of this is that, you know, each employee would be required to fill out an affidavit, whether or not they were vaccinated. If they were vaccinated, we'd ask them to provide HR proof of vaccination, and we'll have some actual numbers of our workforce that are or are not vaccinated. And the way the current policy's written, we could watch the trending of the folks taking advantage of the incentives, and at such time, that at any time that this body wants to revisit it and increase, you know, or amend the policy for certain outcomes, they can. You can.
Thank you.
All right. Got a motion on the floor. Do a roll call, beginning with Commissioner Myers, please. Motion is for the agenda item as written in the electronic agenda.
Yes. Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
No.
Edwards?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're moving on to public hearing and deliberation. Oh, I apologize, I thought we were going to do that in your end of the meeting time, but let's go ahead and affirm two expenditures that this body made earlier in the year. These are two budget ordinances, and so Attorney Drake, I'm going to have you read those and then have this body affirm those.
First is an ordinance to amend the FY 2020 annual operating and capital budget for Athens, Clark County, Georgia, so as provided funding for Athens Downtown Development Authority, ADDA Community Events Program, CEP, for various festivals and events and for other purposes. The second is an ordinance to amend the FY 2022 operating capital budget for Athens, Clark County, Georgia, so as provided funding from the American Rescue Plan, ARP, Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Funds, for the Clark County Health Department to provide a COVID-19 vaccine incentive program and for other purposes.
All right. Motion to affirm these is already approved by this body.
So moved. Second.
All right. Motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Davenport, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. We've got two planning and zoning items. First of these, item 21, regards the Lowe's Homes Center. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Good evening. Just your name and city of residence, and then you have three minutes.
I have to give city or residence? You might tell me how. Trent Farrell, Knoxville, Tennessee. Anyway, here for the Lowe's. Do I need to go ahead and talk?
Yes.
Yeah. This is to expand the width of the building. Originally, when the building was built, which I was the architect at that time, the width, there was a 300-foot maximum allowed, and there was a special use put in place to allow the width of the full Lowe's building. Currently, there, that 300-foot rule has gone away, but, and staff debated for a long time whether we even need to come through this process, but they decided we did. And we're looking to add 31 feet forward to the width of the building along the front for a small 3,000-square-foot addition to the building. It is a new directive from Lowe's that they are putting in to rentals in their stores, and these are totally separate item from the rest of the store. And that's basically the gist of it.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else to speak to this item? All right. Hearing none. Entertained a motion from the commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Go right ahead, please.
Motion to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to special use approval in the CGA Commercial General Airport over a district on the approximate 16.12 acre parcel of land located 3341 Lexington Road and for other purposes.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Drake. All right. Got a motion from Commissioner Davenport and a second from Commissioner Link. Any further input on this item for the two renters of the body? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item 22 is a request regarding 3030 Danielsville Road, and I know there were some correspondence from Commissioner Thornton, if anybody would like to, first, I just need to ask, is there anyone here to speak to this item? All right. Hearing none? Input from Commissioner Hamby?
Yeah, I've all read the emails. Commissioner Thornton called me today and told, told me to do this, so I'm going to do it. When Obitus says jump, you say hi, hi. So, so I am glad to do this. I think it makes sense. She sent us the pictures, did, did the due diligence on, on the project and looked at, looked at what it meant for, for the petitioner and the, and the residents near there. Of course, we saw the pictures of both commercial and residential intersecting there together, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Edwards. Can you read the ordinance for him, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, there's actually also a variance request that will need to be approved to increase the maximum allowed contiguous building length to 483 feet and maximum 400 foot allowed by the ACC Code, section 928-8F1, for the CG zone developments when the gross floor area in excess of 60,000 square feet. Then there's an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, respect to amend the, an ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amend the official future land use map of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, by changing the designation of approximately 2.519 acres of land located 3030 Danielsville Road, from rural to single-family residential and for other purposes. And an ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning one parcel of land, approximately 2.519 acres located 3030 Danielsville Road, from agricultural residential to RS25 single-family residential and for other purposes.
All right. So a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards for the future land use modification. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Got a motion?
Motion for the variance.
The variance, yeah.
All right.
Variance first, Mr. Clerk, says we usually approve the variances first.
So, so we needed to have approved a variance on 21, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The variance went with Lowe's.
Okay.
And we have historically in the past lumped those together and done the variance and, and the special use together.
Okay.
With regard to this item, you do need to do the future land use first and then a separate vote for the zoning second.
All right. So we've just wrote it on the future land use for Danielsville Road. Motion on the zoning?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion on the zoning from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And Attorney Drake, did we have to amend anything regarding those two expenditures from a couple of minutes ago either?
Well, there was also, Commissioner, the clerk pointed out an item 26 to approve the funds for the vaccination policy, an ordinance to amend the FY 2022 operating and capital budget for Athens, Clark County, Georgia, so as provided funding from the American Rescue Plan, ARP, Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Funds, for an employee COVID-19 vaccination payment program and for other purposes.
So, so in addition to the employee policy?
Yeah.
This would be a motion to approve that expenditure for the employee incentive. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, second from Commissioner Denson. All in favor?
Aye.
The internal honor points out this, it may not be item 26. I had marked it as 26. It might be, it was the item that y'all just elaborated.
25.
25. So, it actually went. So, it actually went as an attachment to 25.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now is the time for...
We did, we do, same motion or second, or Madam Clerk, Hamby and Edwards.
All right, now is the time, excuse me, for resident input on any item not on the agenda tonight, so anyone here to speak to any item not on the agenda tonight? Same rules of input apply. We'll have three minutes, and we just need to begin by hearing your name and your city of residence.
Yes, my name is Dennis Holmes. I reside at 1965 Wannaville Road, Lot 2, here in Athens. Yes, I'm, I don't have to tell y'all people why I'm here. Same old thing, each and every time I come up through here. But I would like to say something to you, first of all, Mr. Davenport. I'm pretty sure you're familiar with First John, 4, 7, and 8, right? For y'all that don't know that scripture, that scripture says, "For God is of love; if you're not of love, you're not a God." And I'm sitting here, and I see quite a few people that's sitting behind this wall right here, but come Sunday morning, I'm almost certain it's going to be quite a few of y'all that's going to find your way in some church Sunday. When you find your way in that church Sunday, I hope that you will take that scripture with you, because some of the things that Athens, Clark County has allowed to happen to me, and while allowing it to happen, as a matter of fact, some of y'all have been right along with it. And I can't, I can't understand, I'm 60 years old, 60 years old. I remember a time when I was 26, I told a friend of mine, I didn't think I was going to make the 30. Here it is, 34 years later, I can stand here and say, I made it past 26, I made it to 60. And up until I ran into the encounter that I'm currently encountering now, life was grand for me. But for some reason or another, Athens, Clark County decided to take me and use me as a pawn, for whatever reason, I don't know. But I'm going to tell, I'm going to tell each and every last one of y'all standing out there, hey, when I grew, I grew up in the country. I was, I'm a country boy. Country hard. Hey, we, one thing, we, hey, we grew up 14, 15 years old, we wasn't boys, we were considered men. Now, hey, 60 years old, hey, from 14 to 15 to 60, hey, I've had a whole lot of opportunity to be more men than a lot of people could ever think of being.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Hey, my, I don't think, I don't think my three minutes is up.
Time's expired, I apologize, sir.
Time has expired.
Yeah, your three minutes is up. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Hey, well, I tell you, hey, I'm still expecting $4.5 million in compensation for what y'all done did to me.
All right, anyone else here to speak to any item not on the agenda tonight?
My name is Tom Montgomery, I live at 257 Falling Shoals Drive. Two things, I appreciate you getting the nine police cars, they need more police cars, they need to get the headlights cleaned off, they're yellow, you can't see them, but I do commend you getting new cars and mandating COVID policy for vaccination. Why I'm here is, you know, Falling Shoals had a parking restriction that was approved last, ordinance was approved last month. We are a very friendly neighborhood, for the majority, we all wave at each other as we pass. I am not, I am not at all opposed to the continuous no parking along the length of Falling Shoals Drive, nor am I opposed to no parking at the curve of 141 and 145 Falling Shoals, where the shrub trees come out to the edge of the curve. I'm also not opposed to no parking up on the grade change at 177 and 181. What I do not understand is five houses in the back of the neighborhood that is being shown to be also no parking from 241 to 257. These houses are at the back of the subdivision on a perfectly level, relatively level and gradual curve. These houses are roughly three-quarters of a mile from the Witt Davis Road, and there are only eight houses further from the no parking to the end of that subdivision. You are imposing great hardship to a total of nine houses directly in the event of one of these homes having a party or an event and burdening all of those people, because all those people are going to have to go down three houses or go three houses this way and continue parking only on one side. For the Athens, Clark County TNPW staff stated in the agenda that the site distance is approximately 120 feet, and in the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, which they are using as AASHTO, there should be 155 feet of site distance. I have gone out and physically measured the 155 site distance for the five houses and find that the 155-foot site distance is actually being accomplished, and that is an attachment B that I sent all of you this morning in email, along with what I'm reading right now, along with photographs, and I apologize, the photographs that I took, and you look, you have to kind of look and see that there's a cone. I put an orange cone out and walked up the 155, but I have marked it very clearly on the street that I traffic and would like to come out and confirm my findings. I respectfully request that TNP staff to reevaluate, there's no parking on the houses of 241 and 257 Falling Shoals, and correct the ordinance number, amend number four to the ordinance as necessary to eliminate this no parking on the particular side of the street as a minimum removal of the parking in front of my house, because I spoke to my other neighbors and they were like, oh, well, that's whatever the city wants to do, and I says, no, that's not what the city wants to do.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, you can all read this email if you've all received it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else here to speak to any item not on the agenda tonight?
I just have a clarifying question, I'm not speaking yet. One of the residents that I work with in the Chase Street School Zone is being quarantined, and they wanted to come tonight to speak at the podium, and was asking if I could call over the phone, put it on speakerphone, allow them to speak.
We definitely kind of have had to be flexible in this period, but generally, we just do, when we have live meetings, just live interaction. Evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Stephanie Flores at 462 Cleveland Avenue. I'm here to speak today in support of establishing a community center on the west side of town, more specifically, a community center that can serve the Rolling Ridge community, and then also possibly other clusters of apartment complexes that are in that area, includes the Cathwood Townhomes, the Oaks, and a little farther away, the Garnet Ridge community. And so, I'm a neighborhood leader for the area, starting with Cathwoods and moving outward. And what I see in Cathwood and Rolling Ridge, or Rolling Ridge and Cathwood, is there's a lot of parallels with just like a lack of resource on that side of town. It piqued my interest, I was able to attend the Juneteenth event at Rolling Ridge, which was amazing, and I saw a petition for the creation and establishment of a community center. And so, I felt compelled to join others in the effort to help survey and figure out, is this something the community wants, needs, and then how to narrow in those focuses. And while I was serving, it was a resounding, I mean, I probably surveyed maybe 15 people that day, and it was just a resounding yes for that community center. Some of the options that people clicked off of for what would be beneficial to have in that community center, including mentoring and tutoring, recreation and gym, Wi-Fi and a computer and printing center, a library, a playground, skills development job center, a resource center, community resource officer, and solar-powered, and for it to be solar-powered and eco-friendly, which is in line with the resolution to be 100% renewable energy within the next 10 years. Other issues that people identified as concerning, being concerning in the community were safety, education, lack of resources, transportation, and property maintenance. And so, not everyone clicked on the same thing, but across the board, I did see all of these issues being addressed. They do have a playground on that side of town, but the, it's right next to the road, so that was something I heard a lot of people speaking to, was that they established a playground not maybe 15 feet away from where there is a major road, and there were so many other green spaces for them to put that playground, and so there was an interest in putting a new playground farther away. All the youth that I spoke to, I was like mentioning, just asking, I guess, what parts of the facilities they would like to see. A lot of folks said basketball courts, so spaces that youth can congregate, that's not just like outside of a vehicle or in a parking lot. And so, overall, I think more community centers is a good thing for us, it creates consciousness among communities, it gives people more involved, it helps people feel connected to their local governance, which is a big plus for all of y'all, for all of us. And so, I'm just here to speak in support of it and hope that you'll consider that request, and that the space will feel more accessible to those voices, so that they can show up and not just as their surveys, but as themselves too, and I think that will happen. Thank you.
Evening.
I'm Kendrick Bullock, 100 Saddle Court, Athens, Georgia, and I'm speaking on the community center out in Rolling Ridge. I know a lot of people out there, because I be out there a lot, so, yeah, I think it would be a good idea for kids to have a community center out there, better resources, and, you know, some, give them something they can actually do outside besides just play out in the street and stuff like that. So, I think that's about it I have right now, and I wish y'all can consider it, consider of helping out out there. Thank you.
Evening.
Good evening. My name is Benita Davenport, 410 Athens Avenue. I am a volunteer and one of the organizers for the Juneteenth event for the community of the Rolling Ridge community. Needless to say, I echo the same sentiments of both Kendrick and Stephanie prior to myself. The community is in dire need for a community center for our youth, and also for adults, because it will serve its benefits for everybody across the board. As what was mentioned earlier, we did provide a survey to the residents and those who were present for the event, and we were able to collectively get at least 140 signatures in support of a community center, and we had completed, I think about total, rough number, 74 surveys that were completed. It's a six-question survey that basically targets those concerns from resources, that's what Stephanie mentioned, playground, recreation, and things of that nature, which we will provide copies to you guys in the form of email when we're able to get those copies made to you guys. But definitely, we want you to consider putting this on the forefronts, because we feel that our youth are important and they should not have been, you know, in lack of these resources for such a long time. And I say that simply because I am 40 years old, and I was a resident of the Newtown community for pretty much all of my life. I've lived in the Athens area for over 30 years, and being from Newtown, we definitely were not in arms' reach once the Bethlehem Library, Bethel Homes Library on that street kind of went away, so beyond that, we weren't having access unless our parents were able to take us near Clark Middle for the main library. So, that area has been long underserved for resources, and I just ask that not only you consider, but start to make actionable steps towards getting that community center. All right, thank you.
Broderick Flanagan, good evening, everyone. 243 Sunset Drive, Athens, Georgia. Definitely, kind of speaking in official capacity, as my position as a neighborhood leader for the Chase Street Zone, working in the Rolling Ridge community, you know, we definitely do not speak for the community, I want to make that very clear, we don't speak for everybody in the community. There were several residents that we invited to the meeting, that we urged to come out, but several different reasons, circumstances hindered them, or they just didn't feel comfortable coming into this space, which I understand. And so, again, we have been surveying the community to figure out what the needs are. I heard by wind from a conversation I had, that there was money set aside for a Boys and Girls Club or something on that side of town at one point in time, and maybe that was redirected towards the prosperity package, which is understandable. And so, if we are going to kind of look at that reinvestment of those funds, I think the timing of now is appropriate, because we're getting ready to go into budget sessions or budget discussions in the next couple of months, and also just the money coming down from the federal government, which is another reason why I thought it imperative to speak tonight to this issue. Again, residents that have been living in that community have valid concerns, you know, about safety issues around the playground, morale. We appreciate the monies that y'all gave for the Juneteenth event, I think it was like a thousand dollars that came from the office, the mayor's office, but I'm sure there's much more that was spent on the 4th of July event in, at the Ben Burton Airport, you know, and so I know we allocated about, what, $10,000 for Juneteenth in the future, but that's going to be spread amongst the community. And so, right now, we're talking about equity in terms of making sure they have a facility on that side of town, so that when we do events like the Juneteenth event, they have something to rally around in terms of a physical space, where they can do workforce development needs, where they can address childcare needs, education needs, and other needs that they have in the community. We will be providing copies of the survey at some point, physical copies. I haven't had a chance to look at it myself, and also more of the petition that we started. We want to make sure that we get more signatures, because a lot of people see the need for this community center in this area. And so, we appreciate your time and for your consideration, and look forward to future dialogue around this, and want to try to get people to come back next month. Some people had childcare issues of tonight, some people quarantined for COVID, and again, some people just don't feel comfortable coming in this space for whatever reason, and there's no judgment from me for that, because sometimes, you know, we miss the ball, including myself, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to any item not on the agenda this evening? All right, now we'll go into reports from elected officials and staff. Just to begin with, I wish everybody's safety in this very challenging time. We're certainly hoping that we begin to see a plateauing and dropping off very quickly, but would continue to urge everybody in the public to take advantage of the vaccination incentive that this body has provided to the public. There were nearly 200 people who were vaccinated last week, and I think I received a report late this afternoon that there were 80 more appointments that were made for today, so I'm glad to see people taking the vaccine. It's obviously safe and necessary at this point, and just would ask everybody to continue to mask when they're in indoor spaces as well. Have one committee assignment to make. Now that we have about 15 years of experience with our existing grading code, it's a good time to ask our planning commission to seek staff assistance in review of the grading ordinance as it applies to development in single-family zones, and so I'll ask them to review that ordinance with particular attention to creating a more efficient development process, and thus reducing the cost of new single-family homes, to retaining existing topsoil, to controlling erosion and sedimentation, and to ensure that seeding and replanting is done in a manner that produces long-term benefits post-development, or in the event that a site that is graded is delayed or abandoned, that there would be a bond requirement or similar mechanism to achieve those same ends. And Clerk Spratlin, I'll send this text to you. And I'll turn it over to Manager Williams.
No report this evening, sir.
Anything, autodramatics?
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything this evening.
Attorney Drake, anything this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll begin with Commissioner Hamby, and we'll go backwards to Commissioner Davenport.
Sure, now just to be real quick, got me thinking about your, the...
Sure, now just to be real quick, got me thinking about your, the, what you're asking the planning commission to do, and I don't know if the Affordable Housing Group is looking at this, but I've been reading more about it and how parking minimums impact that, and I don't know if y'all were checking that out or not, but I think that might help us address some of the things that we've seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Oh, gracious, I thought you'd gone that way. First, I want to thank the people who came out and talked about community centers. I think those are really important. I know that when we get to a place with Bethel Homes and the North Athens Development, I think having a community center space there is going to be really essential, so I appreciate people advocating for that. And I was able to get out into the District Eight over on the east side a couple of places since our last meeting, and I think those places are just, like having the community place, I was at the, visited the Goodwill Career Center, which I didn't know about, and I want to say thanks to the people there doing all the work. It's an incredible resource that I had no idea existed, to the extent it did, right off of, outside of District Eight, but close enough that I think of it as District Eight as the innovative healthcare systems. Again, people doing wonderful things in the community, places that people can get to locally. And I had a really wonderful visit over at Southeast Clark Park, where they're looking at a trail grant to connect the part of the park that's right there, where the dog park and the playground and Witt Davis, over to the main part. And these little things add up and meet a whole lot. Again, another bicycle thing, I was trying to follow the path to cut through so I didn't have to go over around onto Lexington Road, and when I got over there, I found out that their plan is to pave part of that so that it's accessible for people on bicycles and also people who have some kind of physical disability, and I want to thank Leisure Services for working on projects like that. Anyway, that's it for tonight.
Commissioner Edwards? Nothing tonight. Mr. Hul.
Very little, but I do want to thank Commissioner Hamby. I think we've maybe built a bridge, we can trot across it from time to time, so, you know, a message to everybody out there that sometimes...
Don't get your hopes up.
Sometimes, sometimes there's a quieting at least, if not an ending to the embattlement, so I thought that was good. I thought, just generally, I guess I'd like to thank my colleagues for having what I thought tonight was a series of substantive discussions and debates without it getting inflammatory or toxic or personal, and I'd like to think that this could maybe be the start of us functioning more consistently that way. So with that, the only other thing I'd like to do is thank the folks who came to speak at the podium. It's a lot to sit through these meetings, especially in these times, so thanks for being here. And to echo what some others have already said about the folks who spoke specifically to a youth development project, I guess I'd just like to share, we did allocate in our budget some money for youth development, so as we're looking forward toward how to use that for this year's allocation of that money, you know, perhaps this is among the projects we can be considering in that discussion in addition to our discussions around ARP. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Hul. Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, just to start off with that, thanking those folks who come up and bring that up, I was excited to hear about that, and I think it's perfect because it turns out that Rolling Ridge is within the Newton Bridge Tax Allocation District, and that one of the benefits, I looked up as we were talking, it says, "The establishment of neighborhood gathering places." So I think that's definitely something that we should be exploring and trying to work with residents in that area to develop, especially, we used to have one over in Garnet Ridge with the awesome clubhouse, but that has, is no longer active. Few more things, just some announcements. Last month, we did the first District Five trash cleanup, it was actually District Five and Six, working with Commissioner Hul. But this month, we're gonna be on Saturday, September 25th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the intersection of Oglethorpe and Hawthorne. Welcome everyone to come out and pick up some trash and get to know each other a little better. And then the next District Five Town Hall will be on the non-discrimination ordinance and how it works, and that will be on Wednesday evening, September 29th, at 5:30 p.m., and that's gonna be virtual, so you can find that online, moving this back to virtual for the time being. And the last thing I wanted to bring up is I plan on presenting a resolution at next month's meeting, hopefully along with many of my colleagues, if not everyone, to go ahead and declare the second Monday of October to be known as Indigenous Peoples' Day as an alternate to Columbus Day. I think it's long needed to happen, not just here in Athens, which we don't, I believe, officially recognize as a holiday here in Athens Clark County, but the term is still used often, Columbus Day, for county business. And I blissfully believe that we need to make sure that we are having factual acknowledgements about our history and our land, and we have been doing that recently, and I think that it's only proper for us to make sure that we are acknowledging the first people, who this home was, specifically the Creek and Cherokee Native Americans. So I look forward to working with any of my colleagues who want to work on that, so we can bring that forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, Commissioner Denson kind of stole my comment. The Holland Park is in the Newton Bridge Road area tad, and, you know, we have occasionally touched upon the idea of expanding facilities there, and I would like to speak with some of the folks who did that survey and see if we can't get some representation on that tad committee from that community, because there will be tax dollars generated that are to be spent specifically in that area that I think can greatly benefit that community.
All right, Saturday, September 18th, in Winterfield, Georgia, at the Front Porch Bookstores, the Winterfield Live Music and Mobile Vaccine Clinic. You get jabbed and you can dance, that's Saturday, September 18th, from 6:00 p.m. And I spoke to some of my colleagues, we, if anybody's interested in being a bus driver, we need some bus drivers. We are short-staffed, and I'm getting a lot of complaints from residents who cannot get to work and students who cannot get to school, so if anybody's interested in being a bus driver, we pay really well, fun and work, and so please apply, or just apply to any of the wonderful jobs at, for ACC. That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, everybody. Eight o'clock.